Driving in the car. I'm driving. Driving in the car. I'm driving.
Mayor Kaufman?
Yeah.
Councilmember Bergen?
Here.
Councilmember Coombs?
Present.
Councilmember Gardner? Councilmember Hancock?
Here.
Councilmember Drinsky?
Here.
Councilmember Kasaw? Councilmember Lawson? Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Mario?
Present.
Mayor Protim Sundberg?
Here.
There's a corn.
Now, please join me in an invocation. O Lord, our God and our Father, we come to you and we ask that you look upon this particular gathering tonight to keep us safe and guide us in our decisions. Bless our city with honorable citizens, industries, sound education, good government. You're not our community together, even though we come from different backgrounds. We pray that there be justice and peace in our city. Give the city council and citizens the wisdom, direction, and sensitivity to the business and proceedings before us tonight. Hear us therefore as we commit this meeting to the help of our community. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Justice for all.
Land acknowledgement, the city of Roar acknowledges that we gather on the territories and ancestral homelands of the Cheyenne, Uta, Arapaho, and Lakota peoples, past and present. We also recognize the forty-eight contemporary travel nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up the state of Colorado. Indigenous peoples have remained committed to the stewardship of land over many centuries. As these words of acknowledgement are spoken and heard, the ties that these nations have to their traditional homelands and to their vital place in the ecosystem are renewed and reaffirmed. And we are called upon to be better stewards of the land we inhabit as we continue to work to meet the needs of our entire community. A motion is in order for the approval of the minutes for September eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Mayor, I move to approve the minutes.
Move by Mayor Protim Sundberg, seconded by, seconded by Councilmember Kasaw. Discussion? I see no discussion. Call for the question on the approval of the minutes for September eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Katie, I'm a yes, Sundberg.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor votes yes.
Katie, I'm also a yes, Drinsky, and can I have a member of IT call me, please?
Yes. Thank you. Councilmember Bergen? Thank, Councilmember Bergen? It didn't come through, yeah.
Did you get it in his screen?
I did not.
I said yes, okay, I'm a yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Lawson? The motion passes with nine yes votes to approve September eighth, twenty twenty-five council meeting minutes with two councilmembers absent.
Next question before us is the adoption of the agenda, and I would move, and I would ask for the removal of item number twelve A. Item number twelve A is the elimination of the Human Relations Commission, and I've been working with staff on a rewrite of the ordinance and would ask for a little bit more time to get that done.
And, and Mayor, Pete Sholley, City Attorney, do you want to just make that motion and have somebody second it?
Very well, I put forward that motion, moved by the mayor, seconded by?
Coombs.
Seconded by Councilmember Coombs to remove item number twelve A from the adoption of the agenda. And let me say to anybody who wishes to speak on that issue, since that was on the meeting to speak on item number twelve A, you will not be able to speak on it at this time because it will not be as part of the agenda. Discussion on the adoption of the agenda as amended? Seeing none, call for the question on the adoption of the agenda as amended.
Excuse me, Mayor? I thought we were also going to remove?
No, that's coming later.
Okay.
Mayor Kaufman?
Mayor votes yes.
Councilmember Drinsky?
I vote yes.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt the agenda with item twelve A removed.
Well, um. Next item is consent calendar on motions. Item number ten C one to nine C two, a motion is in order.
Mayors?
Councilmember Bergen?
Motion to approve nine C? Is it nine C two? And nine?
Nine C one and two.
Nine C, nine C one and nine C two, sorry.
Very well, um. Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by?
Sundberg.
Seconded by Mayor Protim Sundberg to approve consent calendar on motions, item number nine C one to nine C two, discussion? I see no discussion. Call for the question on the adoption of the consent calendar on motions, nine C one to nine C two.
Katie, I vote yes, Drinsky.
Mayor Kaufman?
Mayor votes yes.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt the consent calendar for motions.
Next motion before us is the adoption of the consent calendar on resolutions and ordinances, item number ten A one to ten A six. Motion is in order, Councilmember Bergen?
A motion to approve ten A one through ten A six.
Remove by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by?
Mayor Kaufman.
Seconded by Councilmember Hancock to approve the consent calendar, resolutions and ordinances, item number ten A one to ten A six, discussion? I see no discussion. Call for the question on the adoption of the consent calendar on resolutions and ordinances.
Mayor, I want to make sure I got this correct. It was motioned by Councilmember Hancock and seconded by Councilmember Kasaw?
No.
Bergen.
Bergen first and then Hancock. Bergen and then Councilmember Hancock.
Mayor, can I, Mayor, this is Councilmember Lawson, can I get a point of order? Um, Councilmember, I mean, the clerk, I wasn't even on, she didn't even ask me if I voted on the first one. So, um, can I put my vote in for the first one?
Your mark was absent when you did roll call, so I apologize, but your vote didn't come out, but yes. You can let me know when you join the meeting and I'll make sure that you can vote on it.
I'm on the meeting.
I see that now, thank you.
Yeah, I was on the meeting when you did the vote, so I would be vote on the first one, I would like to say yes, but I was on the meeting when you did it, you just asked other people. So, Mayor, I'd like to make a correction to the first vote, I would like to say vote yes on the first one and on this one as well.
Okay.
Yes. Um. And I'll make sure that we record that vote for you, and councilmembers, it would be very helpful when you do enter the meeting after roll call is done, you let me know, that way I know to call your name.
Okay, um. Item number eleven A, with the click, please read the title, item number eleven A.
Mayor, I'm still collecting votes for the consent calendar.
Yeah, we still need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion? I see no discussion. Call for the question on the adoption of item number, uh, ten A. Resolutions and ordinances.
Councilmember Drinsky?
I vote yes, I, can, can someone from IT, please, give me a call?
And Councilmember Lawson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt the consent calendar for resolutions and ordinances.
Uh, we'll tell you now, please read the title, item number eleven A.
Item eleven A is public invited to be heard on the twenty twenty-six budget.
Um. Greg Hayes, Budget Officer.
Good evening, everyone, could you open up the public hearing, I'm sorry, Mayor?
Oh, is it this formal public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um. Public hearing is now open? Um, is there a presentation by staff?
A brief presentation, this is Greg Hayes, Budget Officer. Twice a year, we, uh, we do a special public invited to be heard specifically on the, the, the current year's budget, which is the twenty twenty-six budget. Uh, with that, I'm going to shut my mouth and just take notes for anybody who wants to offer any opinions and thoughts on the twenty twenty-six budget.
Public hearing is now open? I think I did that it previously, um.
Do you have questions, Mayor? Yeah, any questions of staff?
Oh, are there questions of staff by council?
And then she would see if there's anybody who is online to speak.
I think I got that part. Does anybody wish to be heard?
Yes, there we have one.
We have.
All right, Portia, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Regarding your twenty twenty-six or the budget session that you all are in, the question remains on why the leadership of this council, specifically the majority leaders, continue to be wasteful in the budget. What we have seen as a community, we see that Councilmember Drinsky is trying to do a recall campaign of District Attorney Amy Patton, that's going to cost north of eight hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. We are also seeing continuous police brutality and fatalities that are causing families to have to pursue justice in one of the only ways that they can, because the police in Aurora speak two languages, violence and money. And now, because we can't get leaders who condemn the violence, the families are left to pursue justice to ensure that the providers that are being killed in the street are able to still have their families supported in their, in their absence. So, when we talk about the budget and the continual need for there to be financial stewardship, we currently do not have the leadership in place or the infrastructure in place that is supporting financial stewardship. So, as you continue to navigate the budget and the financing for the city of Aurora, my request and our request is that you identify ways in which you are going to mitigate the continual and inevitable losses that Aurora is going to take financially because they don't have the infrastructure in place with their policing system. Additionally, with the passing of H R one at a federal level, we now are going to see the city of Aurora suffer because of those decisions that were made at a federal level. And despite what these individuals in city council or in other spaces of politics will tell you, it is because of that, that these, these potential budget restraints are going to hit Aurora and it's going to hit them hard. So, our request is that you identify ways and innovative ways to work around the inevitabilities of the police brutality and fatality. And you also consult with Danielle Drinsky, who is trying to spend eight hundred and sixty-three thousand plus dollars nonsensically for some type of recall for reelection attention. That is our request, and we wish you well. May the ancestors be with you as you navigate an impossible journey that is being created by the majority of this council.
That was the only speaker.
Very well, a public hearing is now closed. We're going to, please now, please read the title, item number eleven B.
Uh, item eleven B is a public hearing in consideration of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh six for a zoning map amendment to rezone approximately three point nine one acres of land to medium density residential district located south of the intersection of East Jule Avenue and South Juliet Street.
Mayor?
Uh, I'm sorry, because I don't see anybody's hand up.
Bergen, sorry.
Uh, Councilmember Bergen?
Uh, yes, um, for item eleven B, I would ask that we continue the item to November seventeenth as this will be going to the Planning and Zoning Commission tomorrow evening, um, I think tomorrow evening or the next day. Um, and so, uh, we would like to continue it to the seventeenth. This was actually a request of council, um, a while back as well.
Uh, it's removed by, uh, Councilmember Bergen, uh, to continue to the seventeenth of November. See, it's been moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by Councilmember Kasaw, discussion? Uh, seeing none, call for the question on the adoption of the Bergen motion to continue, item number eleven B to November seventeenth.
Katie, I'm a yes, Drinsky.
Okay. Mayor Kaufman?
Uh, Mayor votes yes.
Councilmember Coombs? Councilmember Bergen?
I voted yes in his script.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously to continue item eleven B to the November seventeenth council meeting.
We're going now, please read the title, time, number twelve A, I'm sorry, twelve A has been removed. Uh, we click now, please read the title, item number twelve B.
Item twelve B is consolidating, um, or introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-five seventy-six, consolidating the Golf Course Advisory Committee, the Open Space Board, and the Parks and Recreation Board into a single Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Advisory Board.
A brief presentation by staff?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, my name is Jason Batchlam, City Manager. Uh, this item, currently there are three separate advisory boards, there's the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, there's the Open Space Advisory Board, and then there's the Golf Advisory Board. Uh, this ordinance would consolidate those three boards into one board. Um, and I'm available to answer any questions as, uh, our staff from PROS.
Questions of staff?
Mayor?
Um, I'm sorry, Councilmember Coombs?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I just wanted to confirm that these folks will have the opportunity to, for example, um, have subcommittee meetings or things of that nature to address, uh, their specific areas of interest.
Yes, we talked to, um, the park staff about exactly that, that I think we could have standing subcommittees on golf, a subcommittee on open space. There's the opportunity there to continue to make sure that we don't lose focus, uh, on those specialty areas within, um, the consolidated board.
Councilmember Hancock?
Thank you, Mayor, my question was answered.
Okay, further questions of staff? I see none, motion is in order?
Mayor?
Councilmember Bergen?
Uh, motion to approve trophy.
Removed by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by?
Hancock.
Seconded by Councilmember Hancock to approve item number twelve B, uh, discussion? I see no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of, of item number twelve B?
Councilmember Drinsky?
I vote yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously to adopt item twelve B.
Wait now, please read the title of item, item number twelve C?
Item twelve C is introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-five seventy-seven, consolidating the Art in Public Places Commission, the Roar Fox Arts Center Board, and the Cultural Affairs Commission into a single arts and cultural commission.
Brief presentation by staff?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, this item is similar to twelve B, uh, on the library and cultural services side, so there are three separate boards currently, as noted in the title, Art in Public Places, the Roar Fox, and then the Cultural Affairs Commission. This would consolidate those three boards into, um, one single item, uh, commission. And as with the, um, previous item, uh, we've discussed with, um, the library staff, library and cultural services staff about how they can use subcommittees and kind of work within that to make sure we don't lose focus on any of these particular items.
Um, motion is in order, all right, I'm sorry, questions of staff? I see none, motion is in order?
Mayor?
Mayor?
Sorry, who was it? Pete, did you have something on it?
Um, no, that was me, Mayor, I moved that we, uh, yeah. Sorry, Mayor.
Oh, please proceed.
I moved that we, uh, adopt the, uh, twelve C and consolidation of the, um, of the I move that we, uh, adopt the, uh, 12C and consolidation of the, um, of the arts board.
Moved by Councilmember Hancock, seconded by
Kasah.
Guys, Councilmember Kasah to approve item number 12C, discussion? I see no discussion. I call for the question on the adoption of item number 12C.
Mayor, we just need to make sure there's nobody signed up to speak.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Katie, is anybody signed to speak?
Uh, we don't have anybody signed up to speak.
Okay. Let's see, item number, okay. Call for the question on the, call for the question on the adoption of item number 12C.
Councilmember Jurenski?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
Uh, yes, Katie, can IT figure out why I'm voting in Escribe? I submit it, it says yes, and yet you're not getting it.
Yes, Office Celia reached out to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. The motion passes unanimously to adopt item 12C.
Will the clerk now please read the title to item number 12D?
Item 12D is introduction of ordinance 2025 79 amending section 2297 of the Aurora City Code concerning members of the library board.
Brief presentation by staff?
Uh, yes, Mayor, this one is, um, not eliminating, just, uh, changing the makeup, um, of the library board, and we're available for any questions.
Questions of staff? I see none, motion is in order?
Mayor, motion to approve item number 12D.
It's removed by Councilmember Kasah, seconded by
Hancock.
Councilmember Hancock to approve item number 12D, uh, discussion? I see no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of item number 12D.
Katie, I'm a yes, Jurenski.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt item 12D.
Uh, with good now, please read the title to item number, uh, 12E.
Item 12E is introduction of ordinance 2025 81, amending chapter 34, Article four of the city code to update the purpose and function of the Arts in Public Places program.
Repression by staff?
Yes, Mayor, this item is related to item 12C with the consolidation of the Art in Public Places Commission into the consolidated, um, commission. Uh, we just need to update our ordinances as it relates to the Art in Public Places program, uh, to reflect that change.
Questions of staff? I see none, motion is in order?
Mayor?
Councilmember Hancock?
I move that we approve updating 12E, updating the Art in Public Places program, uh, to reflect current practices.
Moved by Councilmember Hancock, seconded by
Sundberg.
Uh, Mayor for Tim Sundberg, um, discussion? See no discussion, uh, call for the question on item number 12E.
Katie, I'm a yes, Jurenski.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt item 12E.
We're now please read the title to item number 12F.
Item 12F is introduction of ordinance 2025 88, adding section 134 to 23 to the city code pertaining to permitting minors to drive off highway vehicles in the city.
Uh, Councilmember Bergen?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we just discussed this in study session, um, so I won't go through the entire, um, presentation, but basically, um, yes, this pertains to off-highway vehicles and it also includes e-bikes that go over 28 miles per hour, um, so that, um, this basically is in alignment with our city code, which those, um, those vehicles are not street legal. Um, and this basically puts a, um, um, holds the parents accountable for, uh, kids that are riding those, um, illegally. And we will be doing an educational campaign on those as well.
Okay, I, I think you've covered it, but let me just say that even if an item's covered in study session, there may be us, uh, residents, uh, out there who are watching the regular meeting but did not watch the, the study session. So I think it's important.
Good point.
Over again, okay. Any questions of the sponsor? I see none, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bergen, did you have something else?
No, I was just going to ask if, um, if our attorney or, or any of our police, um, officers that are on wanted to make any statements. We might have a police officer.
Yeah, I'll think, uh, Councilmember Bergen, I think Officer Spanos is online. Um, so, uh, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and, uh, everybody. Uh, this, this problem with these OHV vehicles, it becomes such a problem in our district. District three is where I work. It's, it's literally every day where your constituents are being hit, um, by these e-bikes. There's accidents occurring and it's, it's become quite the problem that I've never seen before. Um, and I think actually it's citywide. Um, but my, my emails and my, uh, phone messages, I would say a good 60% of them revolve around these dirt bikes. And we're not talking about the class one, two, or three bicycles. We're talking about the electric dirt bikes. They have no pedal. They go, uh, they go over 40 miles an hour in some cases. Um, again, they're peddles and per our statute, whether it's electric or motorized gas, um, they're not permitted anywhere in the city. Not in our parks, not in our neighborhoods, not on the streets. Um, so it, it has certainly risen to a level of concern.
Oh, I want to, Councilmember Bergen, if you could talk just briefly about the fine, um, that can be imposed and the responsibility of parents.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, the fine is $250. Um, again, um, officers in discussions with officers and our attorneys in drafting the ordinance, um, they were not able, if, if we didn't hold the, the parent accountable with the, uh, to ticket them and, and, and the fine, um, basically, there was no enforcement, um, on someone that is under 18 years of age. So we felt this was the best course. Um, again, we are going to be, we have already done a lot of education, um, outreach on social media, but we'll be expanding that educational campaign so that parents are aware of the difference of what, you know, what constitutes one of these off, um, highway vehicles. Um, as mentioned with Officer Spanos, class one, two, and three, those, um, are allowed on the street and on the sidewalks. Um, but if they go over the 28 miles per hour, then they're considered off-highway vehicles. Um, one caveat I'll mention is that some of the bikes, um, that have the pedals, um, may have been modified. And that, of course, would be illegal to modify your bike, um, so that it goes 40, 50 miles an hour and would not be street legal. So just an attempt to keep our streets, um, safe and keep everyone safe. Keep the, the, the kids, um, safe as well as anyone that, you know, is, is driving out there. It would be, um, horrific for, for, you know, an accident to happen. And, and so we're just trying to prevent that.
City Attorney, do you have anything to add?
Uh, just briefly, just that this is one of those things that, um, we, we took the jail time that would be subject to the general penalty in the city code off the table for the initial offense. That's why it's limited to $250 on that, on that first, uh, that first, um, offense.
Further questions are, uh, further questions of the sponsor? Um, uh, motion is in order?
Mayor?
Councilmember Bergen?
Uh, motion to approve 12F.
Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by
Kasah.
Seconded by Councilmember Kasah to approve item number 12F, uh, discussion? I see no discussion, call for the question of, on item, call for the question on item number 12F.
Katie, I'm a yes, Jurenski.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously to adopt item 12F.
Look, with the court now please read the title to item number 13A.
Item 13A is finalizing of ordinance 2025 86, amending sections 134, 430, and 134, 451 of the city code pertaining to automated vehicle identification system penalty notices.
Uh, brief presentation by staff?
Good evening. Lieutenant Chris Adams are with the Aurora Police Traffic Section. The police department's asking for this amendment change so that we can use unmanned photo speed enforcement equipment in the city. In the past, we had to have manned vehicles. This will allow us an option not to do it. Um, it will also, this ordinance does require that we have a contract employee view of violations before and so later. So there is that check and balances.
Uh, you know what? Um, you were coming in pretty broken, uh. Um, could you go over that again and hopefully, uh, you were, um, you're not very clear. Can you go, please state that again?
Yes, we're asking for an amendment change so that we can use unmanned photo enforcement devices and equipment in the city. In the past, we had to use manned vehicles. Um, this will allow us not to have to use employees to actually man the devices and we can put an unmanned, um, device on the side of the roadway. It still will require us to have a, uh, employee that will review all of the violations before we send out, um, a notice.
Uh, questions of staff? Uh, uh, seeing that a motion is in order?
Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Bergen?
Um, motion to approve 13A.
It's removed by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by
Hancock.
Seconded by Councilmember Hancock to approve item number 13A, discussion? I say no, uh, discussion, call for the question on the adoption of item number 13A.
Katie, I'm a yes, Jurenski.
Thank you. Councilmember Medina? Councilmember Mario? I'm not going to answer your question.
Are you not listening? The Councilmember Coombs had a question. Yeah. No, it didn't come across.
It, it didn't come through, Councilmember Medina, so we couldn't hear.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was wondering what was up.
Um, further discussion?
Mayor?
Um,
Okay, so my question was about the data privacy issues that I had asked about in the study session previously. Did we find out whether, um, there was definitive prevention of sharing residents' data outside of the city?
Yes, the company would not share that data.
Further questions? Of staff? Uh, uh, further discussion? Uh, seeing none, I call for the question of item number 13A.
The motion passes with six yes votes, three no votes from Councilmember Coombs, Medina, and Mario.
Right now, please read the title to item number 13B.
Item 13B is finalizing of ordinance 2025 87, amending section 5036 of the city code pertaining to the assessment of interpreter fees against defendants who fail to appear for trial.
Repression by staff?
Good evening, Council, Candace Atkinson, Court Administrator. This is just updating our current, current ordinance, increasing the fee from $35 to 95, I believe. Um, and that is, this is just for those that fail to appear for jury trial.
Questions of staff? Uh, motion is in order?
Mayor, I move to approve 13B.
So it's moved by, uh, Mayor for Tim Sundberg, seconded by
Kasah.
Seconded by Councilmember Kasah, uh, discussion?
Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Coombs?
Um, yeah, so we've had this discussion numerous times at this point. Um, again, it's not clear how this is a fee that is not discriminatory toward people that need an interpreter. If our concern is failures to appear, um, then we should be addressing failures to appear and assessing fees accordingly. Um, but the amount of revenue raised here, I think, also doesn't, uh, doesn't justify, uh, the impact to people of being able to have access to this. So I think I need to be a no, and I urge my colleagues to not pass an ordinance that on its face discriminates against a large group.
Further discussion? I've seen that. Councilmember Mario?
Uh, thanks. Um, yeah, I, I, I will not be supporting, uh, this ordinance. I, I made it clear that, um, I, I have deep concerns with, um, the fact this only applies, could only possibly apply to certain, a certain amount of folks in Aurora one and five are foreign-born. We have over 160 languages. Um, so I don't agree with the fee for an interpreter. Um, and I certainly don't agree with the move to like triple, not even just marginally, we're tripling the cost of this fee, um, at this time. So it's, uh, an additional burden. So, um, I will not be supporting this.
Further discussion? I see none, call for the question on the adoption of item number 13B.
Katie, I'm a yes, Jurenski.
Thank you. The motion passes with six yes votes, three no votes from Councilmember Coombs, Medina, and Mario.
Uh, reports? Uh, Councilmember Coombs? Welcome back to Councilmember Coombs.
Sorry, I was having trouble in the meeting. Um, thank you all very much for joining this evening. Um, I had the pleasure with Mayor Kaufman, uh, last week to attend, uh, a meeting with a group of community members who were concerned about bike and pedestrian deaths and injuries in our city, um, as well throughout our state and issues with, um, both appropriate enforcement and investigation of those deaths, but also with measures to ensure safety. Um, so I'm glad to hear during our seven sessions, the update on pedestrian safety that we have seen an improvement over our, um, prior very alarming numbers. Um, I did want to note as well, though, there was a conversation about the very small number of bicycle, uh, fatalities that we've seen on a city year to year. And I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that folks don't ride their bikes um, on our streets in the city. They only ride them on the trails, and the trails are not great for transportation. Um, so we continue to have infrastructure that's set up, honestly, that makes it so that people simply cannot bike safely and wouldn't um, advisably choose to do so. And that's part of why we don't see the fatalities, because people are like, I wouldn't take my life in this much. So I hope that we can continue to address, um, the lack of appropriate infrastructure there. Um, I do, do also want to thank the community members who came to join in person today at Harris Elementary. We can see that there's a desire and a demand for community members to have the opportunity to connect with each other and with their representative. Um, and I hope that in the near future, we can collectively choose, uh, to give them that opportunity in the very space that we have, um, that is designed for that purpose. Um, and that, I'm seeing that.
Uh, Councilmember Gardner is, is absent. Councilmember Jurenski?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, just a couple of things that I wanted to address. Um, the recall against DA Patton has nothing to do with the Aurora budget whatsoever. Um, that would come out of Arapaho County's budget. Um, so I just want to clarify, uh, because it seems like there's some misclarification there. Um, and then to the high, high schoolers that called in with, uh, grave concern about their classmates and what they're seeing them purchase and, um, you know, the smoking and, and how they're seeing it affect them. Um, I applaud you. I applaud every one of you for, for calling in and, and speaking up and, and speaking out, um, against that. It is something very serious. Um, and, uh, you know, I appreciate that, uh, Councilmember Coombs brought that forward. And, um, you know, I also have an ordinance coming forward to, to further this and to further the expansion of, of, you know, such shops and, and stuff like that. and stuff like that, to really crack down on that. But I really applaud you teenagers that called in with this concern. Um, and then, uh, another caller, um, a community activist. Uh, you know, it's usually me calling for the resignation of police chiefs. Uh, however, tonight it was called for the resignation of Police Chief Todd Chamberlain. Uh, I want to say that this is the first time, uh, that I, I, I do not agree, uh, with the call for resignation. Um, I think that Todd Chamberlain was long overdue in this city. I think that he has turned morale around. Uh, you know, there's still a long way to go in the police department. We can always, you know, grow. We can always learn. Uh, that's with any career field. But to Police Chief Todd Chamberlain, I hope you hear me loud and clear. Uh, I fully support you. I think you are doing a wonderful job. Uh, the men and women of the Aurora Police Department think that you are doing a wonderful job. Um, I also heard many of the, uh, callers, uh, speak specifically about me. I can't thank you guys enough. Uh, you guys really helped me to raise money, uh, towards my campaign. Um, every time you guys attack me, every time you guys post about me and tag me, uh, supporters in the city that, that support me, um, donate to my campaign. Um, they sign up to volunteer. So thank you guys for being so, uh, publicly outraged, um, by me. I hope you'll stay focused on me. Uh, my colleagues, Steve Sundberg and Absolu Kasau, um, you know, they're not as vocal as me, so maybe they don't deserve it. So just stay focused on me. Uh, you guys are doing a really great job. I appreciate everything you do. You help me raise a ton of money. Uh, can't thank you enough. On Saturday, September twenty-seventh, um, I have committed, um, to the residents of Aurora that have called in and emailed me from various parts of the city, um, complaining about their local parks. I have said time and time again, our pros department, they do what they can. Uh, but there is a lot of ground to cover in Aurora, and it's time we take matters into our own hands. Um, I planned a, a very, it turned out to be a very successful park cleanup already. I decided to do it again. I had some neighbors email me about Delaney Farm Park, um, and, you know, trash and stuff that they are seeing there. So we have a volunteer, uh, city cleanup event Saturday, September twenty-seventh from ten AM to twelve PM. Um, maybe some of these community activists would like to come. That'd be great, great, great to see you. We can pick up trash together, take out the trash together. That'd be wonderful. Um, and, uh, anybody else from the city? I encourage my colleagues to join. Uh, the first one, only Councilmember Sundberg came. Um, so I encourage my, my colleagues to join, and I encourage you, wherever you live in the city of Aurora, email me about a park near your home that you feel is not getting the attention it deserves. I will bring the attention it deserves. The city will supply all of the supplies, the gloves, the bags, trash grabbers, you name it. Um, they are committed to, to helping me with this project. Um, and then last but not least, um, don't forget to send donations to the Aurora Animal Shelter. They are always, always in need. If you have any spare time to volunteer, um, you know, uh, head over there, spend an hour or two taking dogs out to the play yard, whatever you can do, it would be greatly appreciated. Um, and that is my report.
Uh, uh, Councilmember Kasau.
Uh, thank you so much, and, uh, I just want to echo what, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Jurenski said about the, the kid that is from the, the seventh grade, Garcia. Uh, we do appreciate you coming and, you know, telling us what's going on, and your voice are heard loudly. Uh, thank you so much, and, um, and, uh, our, uh, our Aurora community, our diverse community members, uh, uh, held a lot of heritage cultural event in the last couple of weeks, and I was able to attend the second, uh, Korean and All Heritage Event. Then also I did, uh, I did attend the APS Aurora Public School Gala. And then also I did attend the Taste of Ethiopia at the community. So, uh, it, our community members and held in, uh, a lot of cultural event that will, you know, connect us more. And, uh, for that, uh, I'll be, that'll be, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Mario.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. A couple of, uh, things on my end. Um, just wanted to, um, give a shout out for the, or to the, uh, Food Justice Festival that's going to be happening here, um, this Saturday, September twenty-seventh, um, from ten to two PM here at Paris Elementary. Um, this is, um, a, a really big collaboration between many, um, local nonprofits and organizations, really trying to, uh, create food, um, sovereignty, um, accessibility, affordability, um, culturally relevant food, and I think it's just a big celebration. So I hope that y'all will come out and support for, um, a couple hours. Um, uh, in addition to that, um, just a reminder that my monthly town hall is this Thursday, the twenty-fifth, from six to seven-thirty, and we will be at the MLK Library. Uh, so I hope you will be there. Um, and I also just want to make a point of clarification. Um, when, when we, um, if we were to have an election or recall, um, though Arapahoe County would initially, uh, front the money, like, they would charge the city back for, for those costs. So, um, you know, when we talk about pass-through or charging and, and, and following the money, let's be very clear that, um, that money would be bore eventually by Aurora residents.
Uh, Mayor Protown Sundberg.
Thank you, sir. Let's see, uh, you and I and Francois Sundberg and Absolu Kasau, councilmembers, visited Sage Ridge. Uh, and I'm excited about the amount of homelessness services we have coming online. Uh, by January, we'll have over nine hundred new bed spaces, walk-in detox, walk-in psychiatric care. It's unprecedented for our city. And so it really lends to the, um, the accountability through compassion approach that we're taking. And I want to read something, a quote by Governor Polis that came out in the Denverite Magazine, looking at Denver's approach to homelessness and the mayor sort of shifting course over there. Here's what our governor said. "I think Aurora and Colorado Springs have been better on their approach to homelessness," Polis said. "I think that focusing on mental health is critical." When they say housing first, sometimes that means even when there's an underlying drug addiction or mental, or mental health, you focus on just the housing. It doesn't always work. It doesn't work perhaps even most of the time. You really have to focus on the person. Uh, so that's Governor Polis, and the mayor of Denver said that's a big part of what Johnson now says he's doing. But I'm excited about, uh, what we have coming online here, uh, with our regional navigation campus in relation to Sage Ridge and Aurora Mental Health. I saw you, Mayor, at the ABC Company Fleet Operations, where they, uh, service buses and shuttles and motor coaches. There's an incredible need for this type of service. Even people from Colorado Springs are going to bring their buses all the way up here to get service. Uh, the I seventy Piccadilly Interchange is opening November second. There's a rib, ribbon cutting, an incredible, critical piece of infrastructure to help, uh, move, uh, traffic and connectivity in a more efficient manner in Ward Two. I went to Ethiopia Day, had the honor of kicking it off, Mayor, and, uh, on your behalf, as Mayor Protown. It was fun. We went to the High Line Canal Dinner. I saw a councilmember Kasau there and, and the mayor, a very positive event. Uh, well-run organization. And I want to also echo the fact that, uh, Chief Chamberlain is the right man for the job. God bless him. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Medina.
Thank you, Mayor. Yep, we've had a couple busy weeks. Uh, went to the Ethiopian Celebration on the Great Lawn. Attended right after that, the Malapalooza event with a lot of great music. A lot of people came out to, to that event at the mall. Uh, went out to the Second Annual Korean Community Celebration. Also was at the High Line Canal, uh, celebration as well. Also attended the APS Gala for Youth Scholarships. Uh, my work with B-Well Health and Wellness, uh, Youth Council had a summit this, this past weekend on mental health for youth at the Village Exchange Center, uh, with, uh, working with healthcare professions. And lastly, thanks to all the community members who came out tonight, uh, to see you, see your faces, and it's great to be amongst the community again. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember, um, Hancock.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, we have all had quite busy weeks these, uh, past few weeks. Um, I was with you, uh, on Saturday at the Second Korean Cultural Festival here in my ward. Terrific celebration. We did a bin, bin mat bowl, huge one. It had like two hundred people. It was pretty awesome. Um, we also attended the APS banquet, and Councilmember, uh, Kasau and I did visit the navigation campus. And to your point, uh, Councilmember Sundberg, Aurora is setting the pack, the pace on how to treat the whole, uh, holistically, folks who experience homelessness along with medical issues and drug addiction. I think when we, uh, tackle that thing holistically, that is the most compassionate way to help people to be good stewards of their own lives. It's very important for us to, um, support folks in that effort. Um, we also, um, had the, the, uh, uh, Malapalooza, some awesome bands. You guys, if you missed it, you know, they put on a great, uh, festival over there, and I'm hoping that we can do more outdoor events next year. Um, coming up is the Aurora Borealis Festival out in Painted Prairie. If you have not, um, got your tickets, you should go online and get your tickets. It promises to be a wonderful event. If you went last year, uh, this year will be even better. Um, we have the silent, uh, disco, and we have the Aurora Borealis Effect. We've got, there's going to be, um, crafts and food and VIP treatment and bands. It's going to be really nice. So go online to, uh, visit Aurora. You can get your tickets online, um, to enjoy this fantastic event. Um, I also want to point out, um, that I beg to differ with you, uh, Councilmember Mario. Um, we, as I understand it, we would not spend any money for a recall effort. The county cannot charge the city back for recall efforts. So, yeah, so we'll just leave that at that. And my next town hall is, uh, November or October the ninth at Noonan's, and I hope you come because we're going to have a wonderful presentation about Aurora's energy independence and our future. So that concludes my report. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Lawson.
Thank you, um, Mayor. So my report's going to be more on the town halls that I've done this month. I usually do two a month. So I want to thank first the Metalwood, um, community for inviting me to their HOA meeting, kind of going over issues, addressing concerns along with our PAR team, along with our water department and our fire department. Um, also too, I want to thank my Heather Gardens residents this past Saturday, um, for coming to my meeting as always, and I, as I always tell all of you, I appreciate your support, bringing up the concerns as well. And then on September thirtieth, I will have my, um, meeting, and we'll have the SAVE program there to discuss the youth violence, and that will be September thirtieth, that Central Rec Center. And again, I appreciate everyone and those, um, supporting me in the town halls as well and giving me questions and issues that we have to address in the ward and around the city as well. Um, just to kind of give just a brief legislative update, I'm sure everyone knows what's going on at the federal level. Um, the Senate is set to vote on the House passed, um, continuing resolution on September twenty-nine to avoid the government shutdown. We know that this occurs all the time. Um, so, but I think it is something that everyone needs to pay attention to, especially in what we're doing with the, um, the, the things that are going off the state level and also in addition at the federal level. And Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. Uh, uh, Councilmember Bergen.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, busy couple of weeks. Um, had a, uh, meeting, um, representing E four seventy with the executive director, um, to the Transportation Legislative Review Committee. So, um, at the Capitol, um, the Transportation Committee invites us, uh, to do a presentation basically to let them know what E four seventy does and how we operate. So that went very well. Um, and then, uh, had, uh, Planning and Economic Development, uh, Policy Committee, also attended as Councilmember, um, Sundberg, uh, mentioned, the Sage Ridge Grand Opening. Um, a lot of, a lot of people were there, I think, several hundred. Um, and, uh, after all the, um, opening remarks and the ribbon cutting, then we, we were able to tour the facility, and I know, uh, Mayor, you made a few remarks as well. So, um, it was, it was a great event. Uh, looking forward to it being, um, open. Um, it sounds like they'll, um, they'll be doing phases as well, kind of like our navigation center. Um, then I also had the E four seventy Regular Board Meeting, um, and then the IBTTA meeting, which is, um, real exciting. It's a tolling, um, international tolling agency, and I will be on a panel in October, um, as E four seventy will be hosting the International Conference this year. And then had Region Nine Opioid Abatement Council. Um, I went to the Southlands Wine Walk. That was fun. Um, of course, all of us had our special study session, the budget presentation. I also had the Water Policy Committee, and then lastly, my town hall. I just want to thank Jacob Cox, who, um, did a phenomenal job on development. So my constituents down here got to learn um, a lot about all the development that's happening throughout the entire city. So I think that was pretty eye-opening for them. There was so much, of course, going on in Ward Two. And then also want to thank Bob Oliver for his, um, presentation on retail. And thank you to the PAR officers and to Aurora Fire Rescue as well. That's my report.
Well, thank you. I, I just want to, um, uh, remind the voters, uh, uh, to vote, obviously, this November's election. Uh, for those who live on the Colfax Corridor, between Peoria to the west, all the way to Yosemite, two blocks north on Colfax, two blocks south on Colfax, that whole corridor will have the opportunity to vote on a downtown development authority. Uh, downtown development authority, it does not increase your taxes, but what it does do, it allows any, uh, increase beyond the threshold of where, uh, current revenues are to be able to, um, to be able to remain within the corridor, to be used for improvements. Uh, this, the governance is, uh, by a board appointed by, uh, city council, and so if you live, um, in that corridor, if you, if you have a residence in the corridor, you, you know, uh, you will get a, receive a ballot. But if you're a business owner or a, uh, whether you're a lessee or a property owner, you will be able to vote, uh, in, uh, that election. Um, and go to Aurora.gov to, to, uh, tell you, uh, there, there'll be a section there to tell you about how to, uh, register to vote, because if you're a business owner or a property owner, a commercial property owner, you don't have to live, you have to be registered to vote in the state of Colorado, but you don't have to necessarily live there to be able to vote in that special, uh, election. The, uh, tomorrow, there'll be, um, an event, uh, on the southwest corner of the Andrews Medical Campus, CU Andrews Medical Campus, uh, for, um, a, um, uh, groundbreaking ceremony, uh, for, uh, a Korean War Memorial, uh, which is important to me personally because my father was a Korean War veteran wounded in combat, uh, and spent his last, uh, assignment in the United States Army at the then Fitzsimmons Army Medical Center. So I can remember being that part when I was a kid. So it's going to be a great place for that. That'll be two o'clock tomorrow, and I want to thank the Korean community, uh, for raising the money as well as, uh, the Adams Open Space, uh, Committee, Commission, uh, for, uh, providing a grant, uh, to fund it. Um, to, tomorrow, there will also be, uh, a ribbon cutting, uh, for, uh, an organization called Cross Purpose, and they will have a hundred and thirty-seven, uh, income-restricted units, uh, that will also have, uh, job training co-located with them, and it is a, a, a joint project with Living Hope Community Church. Uh, on, uh, November sixth, the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, uh, will be coming to Aurora, Colorado, uh, to do a walkthrough of our, of the, the Aurora, um, Regional Navigation Center. And it will be then operational on November seventeenth, uh, and then the, um, uh, the Navigation Center, the Current Navigation Center of Aurora, um, Day Resource Center will close. It's on the CU Andrews Medical Campus. Um, saying no further business before the Aurora.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor, I'm sorry. Please forgive me. I forgot one important thing that I needed to do. Yeah, it, I need to, um, announce that I am, um, appointing, uh, Joel Boyd to the, uh, Business Advisory Committee. Um, he will be replacing Michael Hancock, who will be moving to the Budget Committee. Um, Shane Doyle, thank you for all of your work that you've done on the, uh, Budget Committee, and those will be my two council appointments. I needed to mention that during council meetings. So thank you, Mayor.
So is you, you're firing Michael Hancock?
No. He's just moving to the Budget Committee.
Saying, uh, no further business before the Aurora City Council, the meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.